Riots that occurred, even though that is part of the history. But we're, we want to pay homage to the businesses that once lined it, lined the street, lined the corridor. And we have a lot of community partners and there, some of them are here today. If you would like to just wave. They've been coming to meetings since like June. And this is something that we want to do, not only to bring the history, because even our youth don't know the history of Springwood Avenue. There are a lot of second generation and third generations of that, of the businesses that I know personally. Some of them are so excited when we changed some of the menu items, like Kula Cafe, to reflect some of them businesses. That was an honor for them. And I think that this is just to continue to bring pride and the history. And like I said, it's not, it's a commemoration. That's what it is. It's a commemoration of what was and to pay attention to the revitalization that is going on. Okay? I'm gonna let Nina speak.
But basically, the whole concept is if we really want the community to become stakeholders in actually what we're doing. Because if you think back to when most of you guys who came on for city council, everybody's issue was always, they always said they were gonna do something on Springwood and nothing happens. Well, now we're saying, you see productive, you see things going on, you see redevelopment happening, but we need the community to actually get more involved in what we're doing and what's going on in our own community. And that's one of the reasons why we started this project, in order to bring awareness to our community, to be a part of something. So, basically, like our, as we call it, the four Ps, which is our pride, people, progress, and purpose. So that's what we're pushing out to our community. We have, you know, a lot of stakeholders who have come meeting with us on a regular basis, who've actually been getting involved. We have a lot of people that we've actually started reaching out to, because we're actually gonna have NIP to be part of this process for the parade that we're trying to put on in June.
And if you look in your packet that I gave you, there is a calendar of either they already been confirmed or they proposed events to start taking place July and run through, through July 2020. You may be familiar with one of the events we already started this year, and that was Porch Talk. We have collaborated with Coastal Habitat for Humanities, and when they were doing their Love Your Neighbor, we were there with table, food, resources in the community to bring that into the community. Because a lot of times, as you may know, we're always asking the community to come to us for services. And there's a lot of different reasons why they don't, even though they may need it, okay? Whether it's that they don't have the knowledge or something else, we took it right into the community. And so we were able to talk to a lot of residents right in, we were on Bangs Avenue, Ridge Avenue. So that was our start of, and to get them familiar with Springwood Avenue Rising. The other thing was, we did six interviews. We had Monmouth College, the Communications Department, Professor Deanna Shoemaker, she was overseeing that for us. They were interviewing some of the residents about their memories of Springwood Avenue. We got the transcripts all back, even as of today, that we tried, we want to try to include. We're partnering with APM. And so, and you know, their, their focus is on the music. Okay, well, Springwood Avenue, again, we're talking about what was, and a lot of people don't know that. Like I said, if it wasn't for APM and the clips they did, youth that I was involved with, I had her come and show the clip, they were amazed. That's what Springwood Avenue was like. And that's when they started saying, well, we wanna do a talent show, and that's how Asbury Parks Got Talent came about. So all this is intertwined, and I think it's all for the benefit of all of us.
And we thank you for inviting us tonight.
No, we thank you, and I was very late in making their meetings. I finally made one of their meetings about a week or so ago, and you're still looking for volunteers, correct?
Yes.
So if somebody wanted to volunteer, how would they get in touch with you?
We actually have our email address set up, so they can link into that, send their email.
Okay, so since this is on TV, why don't you get close to the microphone and read that for everybody?
Okay. Our email address is springwood dot avenue dot rising at gmail dot com.
Okay, and since we're on TV, when's your next meeting on where, what time?
January.
We didn't say that yet.
It's January 9th, I think it is. It's on there.
Okay, so our next meeting will be January 9th, 2020, 9:00 AM.
You guys killed me.
At Rebirth Church.
You should kill me somewhere.
Well, because here's the thing, usually we try to catch people before they get, you know, their process of work. And then we're also looking, when we start reaching out to the community, we've even willing to do some night times, that way people can still attend those meetings also. It's 142 D Wood Avenue. It's the Rebirth Church.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, one minister, the meeting that I attended, asked for a council person to be on that committee. Do you recall that?
That was my pastor, matter of fact.
Pastor.
Are you offering, you came to the first meeting.
And he never got back in touch with me. So you just volunteered?
On television today.
You'll both be there in January. You know more about Asbury than I do. But, uh, hope be the council representative.
Oh, there you go.
I wanna also say that Councilwoman Chapman, we do have her down. She did say that she would be, that we needed humanitarians, those who are considered humanitarians. And so, beside Professor Shoemaker, we also have you down as giving us a guiding hand as far as humanitarian part.
Yeah, and you know what? I also do the St. Patrick's Parade, and I did the Fourth of July Parade, so I would love to help you with your parade.
I volunteered you already.
Okay. No, I would really love to.
At our last meeting, you volunteered you.
Yes.
That would be great.
Because parades are hard to run.
Yes.
So yeah, I know you're an expert at it.
I would love to help.
I don't know if you know that originally the Elks Parade was started, I don't know when. Again, they laugh at me when I say I remember my parents putting one on the coop, on the hood of the car, and I watched them come down. That was something that always happened. And I think it stopped maybe in the 60s. I'm not sure, maybe you know, Councilman Kendall. But when I say parade, everybody so far is like, down Springwood? And so, yeah, we'd like to do that.
Fantastic.
That's exciting.
Anything we can do to help, we'll do, and you have my word on that. And cannot thank you guys enough. Just do me a favor. Everybody else came, introduce them, please.
Oh, yes. Everybody. And here's the person.
Yeah, stand up and if you wanna just say something, just.
Hi, I'm Barbara Yusak, the Director of Ocean's Family Success that runs Springwood Avenue.
Thank you.
I was born at 24th Avenue in Asbury Park in 1948.
So you're 39.
I'm Jen Soudre from the, excuse me, Asbury Park African American Music Project. So we've been partnering with Springwood and the Rising. We're really excited about it.
And the, to give Soudre credit, Asbury Amp got some curriculum into the Bradley Elementary. So it would be great if, if this project, we could, I mean, you brought up youth, if we could.
We've already been in contact, in fact, one of her staff, or several of their staff have come to our meeting.
Oh, nice.
They talked about using their, what class is that?
Graphic and design.
Graphic and design to do our logos. So there's gonna be a lot of different things in there. The application hasn't gone forth yet, but we're looking at a mural, and we're looking for the youth to help us with that.
Oh, great.
And we're also looking to, at some point, put some of the projects that the kids have already done in the transportation center, so when people come off the train, they can actually see the vision for you.
Great.
Fantastic. I don't think you ever gave your name.
And I'm Rebecca, I'm the intern at Interfaith Papers. So I'm excited you're welcome.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, so very, very much. If we don't see you, have a great holiday season.
Yeah. See ya. I'm on my way to my chill out.
Enjoy.
Be safe and.
We are on to items to be presented by Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning.
Tonight, you have a presentation for development by 202 Seventh Avenue LLC for redevelopment of 202 Seventh Avenue, Block 4, 201 Lots 3 and 4. Can you come up with your board?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney in Red Bank, and I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of my client, 202 Seventh Avenue LLC. As Ms. Alonso indicated, we are a proposed subsequent developer of a property within the waterfront redevelopment zone. We are looking, respectfully looking, to obtain ultimate approval from the planning board for the development of 14 condominium units on the site. I believe, if my understanding is correct, we are the second applicant under the city's relatively recent amended regulations, which allow for a subsequent developer to be appointed on a lot-by-lot basis. Tonight, as you are all undoubtedly aware, is just one step in the city's overall detailed process for appointing the subsequent developer. Recognizing that tonight is a workshop meeting and that there are timing and scheduling sensitivities, in the interest of your time, I am going to simply be quiet and turn it over to Bill Stuckey, who's one of the representatives of the company, and he's going to explain and describe this, this great and beautiful project.
Okay. Good evening. Before I, I assume all of you have seen the plans that were submitted, and before I get the boards out that are a bigger presentation of those, I wanted to talk to you about where we started and where we've come to get to this meeting. Pat and I started working with a firm in Homedale called Sonnenfield and Trophy last January to come up with the design for this building. The first thing, the first thing that you have to do is sort of bulk out the building with respect to parking, because parking is the limiting factor in how many units you can build. And as most of you know, the requirement is one and a half spaces per unit. So we quickly determined that the maximum amount of units that we could build in a six-story building was 14 units. Pat and I were also very adamant that we provide a great deal of outdoor space around the units in the form of balconies, because we think, being at the beach a block from the ocean, that it would be nice if people had balconies that were big enough to accommodate a table to have a meal, and lounge chairs as opposed to a very small balcony that, you know, might enable you to stand out there and have a cup of coffee. So, and our firm worked on this, and by April, we had a plan that we could use to submit to I Star in the City in our subsequent developer application. That was submitted in early May of this year, and I believe it was late July, we were appointed, our I Star in the City blessed, Pat Fasano Properties, in particular, the LLC, as qualified to build this project. We then went to the TRC, and I think it was mid-September. And I wanna talk a lot about this.
A lot?
Not a lot, like two or.
A lot of three and a half.
No, two or three minutes. It was a dynamic process. Michael Sullivan, Avon Clayton, and Barbara had some very definitive ideas on how we could make the building better. Namely, have the main entrance to the building off of Seventh Avenue as opposed to the side of the building, which is where we had it down a walkway. They also wanted us to consider having indoor, an indoor storage facility for bicycles and boogie boards and surfboards and things of that nature. And, and Michael Sullivan had several comments with respect to the, to the materials that would be used on the outside of the building. We had a color scheme that had about four colors on it, and he wanted us to simplify that. And so what we did is took the comments from the first TRC meeting, and within a couple of weeks, we revised the plans. And quite frankly, the revisions made the project, the design, much better. We then met with Michael down in Trenton, went through our revision, and he had some more comments. We revised the plans again and sent them to him, and he was happy with our ultimate plan. We went back to the TRC and presented the plan, I guess, in late October or early November. And the TRC was very happy with the outcome of the redesign. So I wanna get the boards out and talk about a few things, answer any questions you have, and wrap it up.
Let me take a short break, Fred, I gotta answer a question.
So I'll start off with a pretty picture of the front of the building. All of the materials on the exterior are composite materials, so they will, you know, withstand the weather, particularly down by the beach. The materials are nichihua, a wood grain material panel on the front, and Michael suggested we put it on the side. The materials on the base of the building are nichihua too, and the siding is hardy-clan. What you're seeing here are the balconies that wrap around each of the, each of the units on floors two through floor four, and about, and they're about 700 square feet each.
We want to show it to the people in the audience as well.
Sure. Yeah, if they come to things, yeah, they can put it there, maybe put something too.
So, you know, so Michael simplified or suggested we simplify the color scheme, which we did, and had some very specific suggestions, instead of seagrass on the front of the building, which he doesn't like. He had some suggestions for other plantings. I should probably talk about the things that the TRC recommended with respect to redesigning the building. This is probably too small for your city.
And that was one thing missing from our package, we don't have the TRC reports. That's not your fault.
No, okay, I didn't know there was a formal report.
I'm sure there are.
There's my report, she has it in the package.
It's not. Your report is, but the TRC report isn't.
It's okay, Mike, it's included, it's a reiteration, because a lot of that Mr. Stuckey's talking about, that, he's showing you the end product.
Okay.
So what, what the TRC had recommended was that we have the vestibule on the front of the building, and we had the vestibule coming down the side of the building and entering the elevator lobby and stair area. So we put the vestibule here with the pretty big lobby and a mailroom adjacent to it, which made sense. And we rearranged the parking to put a bike garage behind the elevator lobby. And we also are putting a large bike rack on the other side of the building. As the parking's configured now, we have 23 spaces, which is two over the minimum. But what we're going to do is offer the people that buy these the opportunity to have us install stackers. And Pat and I have a determine whether we'll do that in the base price or as a modest extra. But if we do that, we'll have 36 parking spaces for 24 units. And that gets the cars off the street, and we think that's a good thing.
What size are the parking spaces?
They are nine by 18, I believe.
Is that what's asked for in the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any of them ADA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you know, I think that, you know, Pat and I felt that this suggestion to have the lobby off the street, you know, really improves the way the front of the building looks and makes it a better entrance. In terms of the units, which are all, which were also in my summary of, of the building, which I submitted with this plan, on floors two through four, we have four units, two in the front and two in the back. The ones, these are all two-story, two-bedroom units. The ones in the front are a little larger than the ones in the back. All the rooms are generous in size and have, as I said, the balconies that wrap around. On the, on the fifth floor, there are two penthouses that are about 2,600 square feet, and they have two bedrooms with the option for a third bedroom, can be used for a den or a bedroom. You know, we think that we're at a good price point for not the Ocean Club.
What is your price point?
We're, we're looking at selling anywhere from 550 to 750, and the penthouses, we haven't priced yet. We have to give pricing to the bond council to do our pilot program, and we're working on that right now. So we're about 500 square foot things for the units, in some cases, a little less. That's that plan. The rooftop deck, on the rooftop, we're going to have a common area where people can gather and, you know, have birthday parties or, you know, Memorial Day or July 4 celebrations and look at the fireworks. And we're going to have a barbecue and a refrigerator and a sink for the people to use, as well as tables and chairs.
Outdoor music?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Outdoor bar?
Uh, no.
So that bar's going to go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, we have PTSD from the Asbury Hotel, right?
Right, okay.
I had no problem with the bar.
Yeah, I talked to Pat about it, it was in some of, it was a comment Michelle made, and he said, no, we're not doing the bar.
It's just such a residential area, too.
It is. I mean, we're gonna have a big, you know, six burner grill, a refrigerator, and a sink to wash dishes.
So when you say no, no music, you mean no live music and no recorded music? So be no music.
You know, I, I don't know whether we should or you want us to limit, I mean, if people are up there, can they play any music?
Well, you don't want outdoor speakers.
No, no.
That would impact your neighbors.
And that would be more addressed at the planning board session and everything too, where that would be incorporated in the resolution as far as the music and everything.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's a beautiful project.
Yeah, I like it. It's very nice. Congratulations.
Gotta get to the finish line, but we're very excited.
And we're anxious to move forward, and we appreciate your, your time and support. And we appreciate the help from Michelle as well.
So the next step would be a resolution of the council providing a conceptual approval now.
The next step is redevelopment. And then together, those two would go forward together by now.
And we've started that process and will continue, so thank you very much.
Yeah, no, it's a beautiful project, great job.
Thank you.
It is a beautiful building. Best of luck.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Bye, Mr. Fedo.
Same to you, thank you.
We are on to item E, a review of the agenda items for the December 11th regular meeting.
We usually just let you read it, if you have any questions.
So, first, they are going to be your minutes. So I want to consent, we have our bill, keyment. Kevin's gonna help you with this. Of the research, I know some items, I guess under chapter 159, for our DOT grant. We're worried of contract for animal controls in Mountain County SPCA. The next item would be the contract for line communications with security cameras. The next resolution would be the purchase of a surf boat, each department, authorizing additional parking case stations. And then the renewal of the liquor license for the Elks Lodge. The ordinances, we are going to have the ordinance regarding our film photography permit. And the next item, 49 and 50, are going to be pulled in tables to a future meeting, myself and the CFO and the HR director. I just wanted to go over them before we go ahead and start changing.
Don't?
No, no.
Okay. Disregard.
Okay. Any questions on the agenda?
No.
Okay, and I have to apologize for being rude and not introducing the city manager to the audience, and so the city manager is Donna Vero, and I'd like to introduce her to everybody, and Donna, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Sure.
Okay.
Just wanted to say hi and thank the mayor and the mayor and council for this opportunity. I'm a resident of Asbury Park, and I love this little town, and I know a lot of the employees, either by living here or doing some volunteering. And having been here for about a week now, there's a great bunch of staff people here. So I'm sure all of you that come on a daily basis probably know them all, but I've been so impressed with everyone's ambition and eagerness to do things. So looking forward to working with the city council and staff, and thanking, I think, the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, ready?
Mm-hmm.
We're on to matters from the city council.
Okay, so I have a few announcements. We're having a winter coat drive, and anyone can donate coats through Friday, January 3rd. Drop-off is the second floor of City Hall, and coats will be given away on Saturday, January 11th, from 9 to noon at the transportation center. There is, on December 16th, a winter walk in the park hosted by the Alliance for Healthier Asbury Park, and that is at Library Square Park at 5:30 on December 16th. It's free, there'll be hot cider and snacks. Also on Saturday, December 14th, is Asbury Park's annual Kwanzaa celebration at 2 o'clock at the senior center on the second floor, and then followed by the tree lighting in Springwood Park at 5 o'clock. Hope to see you all there. One last thing, actually, two last things. City of Asbury Park has beach bathing gift certificates available on sale now, City Hall Lobby, so come get them for Christmas gifts. I also want to remind folks that we're still taking applications for city boards and commissions for the next week or so, so anybody who's interested, please get involved, fill out an application, and come join us on some great boards and commissions. out an application, and come join us on some great boards and commissions.
And we'll be doing a lot of those appointments in January, so, so get your application in if you're interested. I just want to acknowledge Yvonne Clayton, her sister passed away, that's why she's not with us tonight. The service was today and this evening, so our condolences to, to Councilwoman Clayton at this time. Free parking is every Saturday until January one, from nine to six P.M., so don't feed any in the meters throughout the city from nine to six. And we still are looking for people for the census jobs, so the census jobs are really good for local residents because, one, they pay twenty dollars an hour, but, two, the idea is if you know people coming to your door trying to get information about census, you're more likely to talk to them and engage with them. So you can do it full-time, part-time, you can kind of make your own schedule, so we want to encourage everybody to, at least, if, if you don't need to do this kind of work or do census work, if you know people that do, we're happy to reach out or provide them with the flyers and contact information. That's it.
That's it. I have nothing, thank you.
We're on to matters from the city manager.
Nothing at this time.
Matters from the city attorney.
I have nothing at this time.
We will take a short recess, and the regular meeting will begin at seven. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Hello.
Councilmember Kendall went home ill. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We are on to silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please stand.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Store Ledger on January second, twenty nineteen, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're on to the public partition, public part, oh my goodness.
Participation.
Participation of the move, of the meeting. Do I have a motion to, to open the meeting to the public?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each member will have three minutes.
Ernest McNally, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I want to start by saying I have been emailing the city of my concerns, very serious concerns about the parking authority in Asbury. I'm alleging that there's biased partisan, false information given out, problems with ticketing, lack of enforcement, perhaps enforcement people messing around with tickets in the court and stuff. I just can't understand why the police officer who runs the enforcement can't be looked into. I don't get it. Everybody's complaining, especially me. I would like to see Mr. Eugenio, who runs the enforcement, be investigated. I mean, there's a lot of money, five million dollars a year kicking around. He claims to be the only person, you know, and he doesn't have a stellar background in terms of bankruptcy in the city and all kinds of issues going on, so why can't he be looked Of course, everybody knows they arrested again the Asbury Park Police, charged him with another felony, official misconduct this past Saturday. They were arrested and brought to the Monmouth County Jail, and then they were brought into the court, the court on Saturday. So, more charges, et cetera. I'm the victim, and I'm getting victimized over and over again. The city has arbitrarily and capriciously, for years, blocked my ability to email, to write on Facebook, to write reviews about the police, about the fire department, about anything. I don't, look, Asbury operates to its own drummer. Everybody knows it. I've never been near a court, the city attorney, I'm very unhappy with that law firm, Ansel Graham Aaron, really, they just do things because they want to do it, or because the city manager did, or because the police chief wants to do it, or because the fire chief wants to do it, but they have no due process. They don't say, "Look, we're gonna take away your ability to show up in court, we're gonna say that you're harassing people." Well, they say I harass everyone. Really? You want to call this the next door gets to put online about me, telling people where I live, where my car is, that I harass police and firemen, they've listened to all my voicemails, they've read my city emails. How does this get allowed? And then a few months after this, which emanates from the next-door people in Asbury and Ocean Grove, a few months after last year, my Jeep gets all four tires knifed at my house. Now, September third, again, now my Jeep in Ocean Grove and my car at my home in Deal Lake Drive. And, look, they put in here my name, they say, "Oh, he's got restraining orders, he's, he's violent, he's crazy, he's, be on the lookout for him." Then they take a picture of me. Now, you want to see where the picture came from? Inside the police department. Look at the window. Look where I'm standing. Are you kidding me? And this chief sits over here like he knows nothing?
Thank you.
You know where I'm going?
Long Bridge.
Next?
Hi, everybody. Sylvia, Sylvia, the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I, A, wanted to welcome our new city manager, Donna Vero. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
B, I wanted to thank our police department, the fire department, and DPW for everything they did to assist with the downtown tree lighting this past Saturday. It was really magnificent, and I'll tell you, those guys worked so hard and did such a wonderful job. The fire department, at the last minute, the, the bucket truck did have to go to a fire in another town, so they improvised and, and brought Santa downtown, and it was, it was magnificent having him like right there on the ground. The kids just really had a fantastic time. Lastly, the Commander Jameson from the Herald Daily Post one-three-three-three asked me to invite everybody, the city officials and anybody else who would like to come to the post this Saturday. They're doing a holiday party, and they're honoring a hundred and fifty local guardsmen, and they're gonna have a full buffet, and I think he said it's gonna go, just called me about an hour ago, I think he said it's gonna be twelve till four, kind of an open house kind of thing, so if anybody is available and would like to come, they'd love to have you there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job with the tree lighting, Sylvia.
Thank you. Did you notice that it was very recent?
Hi, Rita Marano, Eighth Avenue. I, well, welcome, Donna. I didn't get a chance to meet you, but.
Hi, Rita.
I wish you good luck.
Thank you so much.
I reread the resolution about the artwork on the building, and when, when I reread it, I realized, I realized you didn't have no bid on that. That was just something you just wanted to do. And then you put on the bottom, "No more than ten thousand dollars," and that's how much it cost. Now, it seems kind of funny that there was no bid, and it was ten thousand dollars for that art, artist's rendering. Now, that, I don't know what it means to have it up there, but wasting ten thousand dollars when all of us taxpayers in this room got an increase, and it went from anywhere from three hundred to a thousand, I heard, I don't think that's right. And I don't think you should have a slush fund neither for doing things like that, or the other thing that you were gonna have, the fashion show. That's not what you're up there for. You're supposed to streamline government and pay attention to every taxpayer in this town, not just a certain few. And to me, that reflects a certain few, because one of your council members is on the app council, and then whoever approved it, you had a unanimous vote, I saw the vote, so everybody voted for it. I mean, you said, you really have to pay attention to all these little details, because ten thousand here, five thousand there, they add up to a lot of money. The other thing I wanted to ask about was the fifty million dollar bond that we took out many, many years ago. Who's keeping track of that? Do we know how much money has been spent out of that bond for the developer? And I know forty percent of what they pay comes back to the city, but I think we should have an accounting of that. That's important, that we know what's going on. And that's about it. But I want to know about the artist's rendering, how that got approved at ten grand. And I don't know if anybody thinks that that's worth ten grand. And the other thing is, it's a wreath with a, with a diving board on the top. What are we, I don't understand it. I mean, I, I tried to understand it, I like art, but not that kind of art. So what's going on? How come it was no bid and it was ten grand?
You're going back to December two thousand seventeen, right?
Yeah. The other thing, it was in there, she got paid in three parts, the way I understand it, and it doesn't say in the resolution that she would get a deposit, and then she would get another three hundred and something dollars until she got to ten grand. That's not right.
Okay, I would.
It's not me ordinance.
Okay.
All right?
I would suggest, if she's in tomorrow, you call Joanne, the CFO, and ask her that question. And your other concern, I think it was about the, you said the.
The bond.
The bond, I think you're talking about the fifty-eight million dollar rab on the beachfront? That is checked, and that is reviewed, and again, you can either talk to Donna or Joanne about that. It is reviewed.
Do you keep track of it?
Does the city? Absolutely.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Because we never hear anything, we don't know, you know, we knew it was fifty million, but we didn't know how much is left, how much we spent, how much they used. The developer uses that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, that's the other thing.
Every dollar is tracked, and every invoice against it is looked at, and many invoices have been thrown out in the past, and if we think they're not legit in the future, they'll be thrown out in the future, and maybe it is something like we should give a semi-annual report on, and I'll leave that up to the city manager, and she doesn't have the facts in front of her tonight and everything, but if you call Joanne or Donna in the future, I'm sure they can give you exactly who does it, when it's done, and everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Move to adjourn.
Move to close.
Second? All in favor?
Okay, before we go on to the agenda, Louise, Louise Murray's here. Louise, number one, I apologize that I haven't done this sooner, almost probably, close to a year ago, Louise brought to our attention a problem with special events and special events billing, and we've done a good job, not a hundred percent yet, but we've done a good job of correcting it, and we wouldn't have known about it unless you brought it to our attention, and I'm sorry I didn't thank you sooner, but I have to thank you tonight. Thank you, Louise. Okay. Thank you.
We're on to minutes. We have the executive session minutes of November twenty-six, the work session minutes of November twenty-six, and the regular meeting minutes of November twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to the consent agenda resolution, we have twenty nineteen three seventy-five as a resolution approving special events application. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. Resolution twenty nineteen three seventy-six is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. It tells me yes.
We are on to resolution twenty nineteen three seventy-eight is a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty nineteen budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, DOT alternative transportation enhancements. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution twenty nineteen three seventy-nine. It's a resolution authorizing an award to Monmouth County SPCA for animal control. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution twenty nineteen three eighty. A resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for security cameras. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nineteen three eighty-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new surf boat for the beach department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Question? I have a question on that. Would it, would it be worth our while to use menu money for that?
That's what I just said.
I don't think so, because it was better off taking out a surplus and using the menu items for other things. If you, if you want to.
Madison Marquette, just so, gives a certain amount of money per year that we call menu money, that goes for improvements in the waterfront as per our redevelopment agreement.
So a hundred thousand a year, we can, we can carry it over, we can ask for it upfront, and we're supposed to adopt that list by February, and we never do.
And sometimes we've gotten like extra gar, the things that, the little cars that empty the garbage cans or.
Or trash cans for the boardwalk, different things.
Right, the beach supervisor directors will make up a list, and then it will be sent us, and then.
Okay. But you get that list normally as part of your budget?
No.
Usually happens in the, in the meeting.
We can get it, they probably already have it prepared. When you meet with them, you can ask them. Okay.
Okay, I had a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution twenty nineteen three eighty-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of parking pay stations. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nineteen three eighty-three is a resolution approving the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty liquor license renewal for license number one-three-zero-three, thirty-three, zero-one-three, zero-zero-one, Monmouth Lodge number one-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to resolution twenty nineteen three eighty-four, which is in addition to the agenda, which is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation of a nativity for a holiday scene. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to public hearings, second readings. We have ordinance twenty nineteen forty-seven, an ordinance creating within chapter four of general licensing, section four dash twenty-seven, film and photography permits of the code of the city of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion to open twenty nineteen forty-seven to the public?
Move to open.
Second to open?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor to open twenty nineteen forty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. If anyone has any comments about twenty nineteen forty-seven, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Carrie Butch, five hundred Deal Lake Drive. I just want you to add one word. Can you add one word to this, this document? Where it says education slash student film, can you put education slash student slash independent film? And that would cover low-budget films like Christina Iliopolis's film, Tonight and Every Night.
I think they already covered it in another phrase, but that's not a major change. I have no problem checking.
Or should we do, instead of independent, would it cover if we did nonprofit?
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay, the definition of independent being, as long as that's clear.
Yeah, I don't know that that is clear, what an independent.
But it's.
Well, it just, right now, you say major motion picture, but you have a film schedule a price of, I guess if you're in educational film, a student film fee of fifty dollars, it would mean that right now, you wouldn't have to pay that major motion picture shooting fee for six days or more, daily fee of thirty-five hundred dollars. Nobody's gonna be able to, to do that unless they are a, a major motion picture film operation.
And that's, that's what this was intended to do, because we had people filming commercials and people doing films, and when they were told the price, they were laughing all the way to the bank.
Exactly.
So we put it, the price for the big people, the commercial, a major film, but we So we put the price for the big people, be it a commercial, a major film, but we made sure the wording in it here is that anything, like you're saying, is in here.
Yeah, because it would, an independent film would usually mean it's not a major motion picture company.
I don't know that it's spelled out.
A film which is financed or distributed by a major motion picture studio would be an independent film.
And not only that, but what, what about like non, our local nonprofits, if they're out filming somewhere? I don't know that that's.
It's a good idea, as long as you have a definition that's clear, we can enforce it.
I can't.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So you're going to add independent slash nonprofit?
I think we need to probably clearly define.
Right next to education slash student slash independent slash nonprofit?
Fred, you want to talk about that for somebody?
Yes, well, I would agree that we need to insert a definition for independent. So that's something that, that we can include. But the question also was raised about nonprofits as well. So that's a policy call. If you want to add nonprofits to the same $50 fee, we can do that too.
No, I don't. I know some nonprofits that have more money than General Motors and pays $2 million a year salaries. I mean, just because you're nonprofit doesn't mean you're not like rich.
So what if one of our local organizations wanted to go out and film around the city?
Well, he thinks they're covered in this ordinance. Let me just look at that, then you might rest my concerns.
It was supposed to be, and I thought.
Why don't you say local nonprofit? And that would cover what Eileen is sort of saying.
I think local needs to be defined as well. I think we just need to be really clear about, about what this represents.
Okay.
And I don't know that we've actually.
Thank you.
Done that. Thank you.
Do you want to table this to the next meeting, which is the 18th? So that in between now and the 18th, we can incorporate the non-substantial revisions?
All right, motion to close 2019 47 to the public.
And the purpose of this was to make sure nobody, be it a small person, independent film from Monmouth University, some kids doing something, was not charged the maximum. If it's not spelled out clearly, we either withdraw it and do it again or table it and fix it.
Right, well, I would suggest tabling it. That will give us an opportunity to take a closer look at this and determine whether they're already covered or whether we need to incorporate amendments. And we can discuss it further at the December 18 meeting.
Right. And I think, yeah. Educational student film.
I wouldn't necessarily think it substantially alters the substance.
Like, what if she had lost and do it for hypothetically? I'm using her as an example.
Table it.
So we need a motion to table.
Okay, let's.
Move to table.
Let's close 2019 47 to the public.
Move to close.
Okay. Motion to table 2019 47.
Motion to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance tabled. We have ordinance 2019 49 and ordinance establishing salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park.
Withdraw it.
Thank you.
So if you don't want to table this, you just want to.
Withdraw it.
Withdraw it? Okay.
Without prejudice.
Okay. Ordinance 2019 50. Is it ordinance amending salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park?
Withdraw it.
Withdrawn?
Yep.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. 2019 50. Councilmember Chapman, withdrawn. Yes, I didn't take a vote on that. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
What?
Right?[1791.53]